Where you at? Mr. Flacco, can you call the roll, please?
Lori Criskey.
Here.
Linda Grassley.
Here.
Denise Bruce.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Dennis King.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright, so today we're gathering so we can have a work session for Superintendent Dr. Retino to host a facilities visioning session with community members. So we're really just here observing today, and this is really Dr. Retino's show to work with you guys as community members.
Alright, well, thank you all for coming. Don't get too comfortable because we're gonna get up and move. You've seen plenty of slides. They're up there by our facilities. Really, today is listening to you and really kind of focusing back on why we're here in our vision. The vision of Riverside Local School District is one community pursuing greatness and getting better every day. I really want you to take a second to think about what that means to you, your students, as a community member, as a parent, as someone who's an alumni, perhaps. One community pursuing greatness, getting better every day. Take about thirty seconds and think about that. Prior to this, I would've said before they moved, the guardians came up, we'll be out by 8:08. They moved it up and it killed my thunder, so I apologize for that. But we're gonna, this is not really long. I'm not gonna sit and talk at you. You're gonna be active today. So one community pursuing greatness and getting better every day. When you have that thought, grab a marker from your table and join me over at the large chunk of white paper up there, please. Alright. In your mind, I ask you to pick what a perfect Riverside looks like. Not just, we're gonna step away from the buildings for a second. What does the education look like? What does the teaching look like? What does the opportunities look like? What does a community involvement look like? What does the classroom feel like for your child? What does the classroom feel like if you're a staff member? The building feel like? Up here is Riverside. What I'm gonna ask you to do is draw a line off of that and put your thought. If you agree with that or wanna specify off that, you're just gonna draw a line off of that and put something else. And we're gonna build this out, and I'm gonna look for themes. So I'm gonna give you about twenty minutes and keep asking, I will keep asking questions as you go. Usually takes one or two brave volunteers to step up first. But what does the ideal Riverside look like as one community pursuing greatness and getting better every day? If you agree or wanna expand on somebody's, draw a line off of theirs. You can work with a partner if you would like. You can introduce yourself to a partner and then start working with them. Start to think about what those themes look like in buildings now. Drawing off of them. What does that look like in a classroom? Multiple responses are encouraged. Staff, come join, please. You're in it. You know it. You live it. Let us know what it's like. What type of after-college programming is offered?
I just told Dr. Retino I'm gonna move up here. What is, what does this mean? For who? Equity for who? When you think about that, what does that mean? I don't know who wrote it. It doesn't even matter, but think about that. What does cooperation mean? Cooperation between who? So look at some of these words and start to think about what do they mean to you, and then continue to expand. So cooperation, collaboration might mean the same thing, but between who, doing what?
What does transparency look like? Tell us more about safety. If you have yellow, consider changing your markers. Listening and communications, what does that look like? What type of learning opportunities would you like to see? How do you want your student talk? What do the competencies in a portrait of a Riverside beaver look like in the classroom? How are those taught? How's that worked out? How do we interact with our community, both businesses and residents? What services should we offer? What partnerships should we establish? What opportunities should we have with secondary, with higher education? Vocational schools? How does that play in the curriculum? What are our partnerships look like with community agencies?
If you think about the things yellow, like, they're a little better than us.
Engagement's up there. What does that mean? That's a big one. We hear that a lot. We want engagement. What does engagement look like? What does it sound like? What do you wanna see coming home or not coming home? What does academic success look like, sound like, feel like for our students?
You wanted to set a towel here?
Yeah. Anyone else? Come on, this is your chance. You're not looking at slides. This is great. I'm not giving you the history of it. I would add successful graduates. Successful graduates maybe means they are college career workforce ready, whatever they choose to do.
So what about our elementary, through that school, what do they think for them?
So as they started in elementary schools, they're gonna start learning all those competencies as well as the basic skill that they need to build a firm.
And what about skills?
That core curriculum. Obviously, they need to learn how to read, and basically craft. They learn how to think. They learn how to cooperate, listen, communicate.
Chris, when you say community involvement, last one?
Yep. What do we need for that community? Can you give another minute or so to think about your last ones? You haven't had a chance, you can. What's our relationship with our private school families, our homeschool families? Alright. What I'm gonna ask you to do right now is kind of head back to your tables. We're gonna split up into six groups. So there's seven tables, so if you all fit it... Leave this table empty. There are eight tables. It's up there seven. So six groups would be great. Okay, in your... So there's post-it notes at your table. I'm gonna ask you to grab those post-its because we're gonna get up and move again. And what I've asked... So in looking at a lot of these themes, obviously, we're here to talk about facilities. So in the chart paper, I've got Buckeye and Mallard. They're two legacy elementary schools. Obviously, they're in Buckeye. I had them move over there. Riverside Campus is sitting over there. Oh, it was, you didn't hang there clear.
We didn't tell them to just send it right down.
There were three others, and they are cooperation, communication. That was a theme that clearly came out in our little visioning activity. Equity and fairness is one that definitely came out. Specifically of our building, that really kind of resonated in a lot of the comments. And community involvement. What I'm gonna ask you to do is we're gonna, each group is gonna start at a poster. You're gonna do a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for each of the major topics. So in your group, you're gonna have some discussion. And on your post-it note, if there's a strength, you're gonna put that up as strength. If there's a weakness, you put that up under the weakness. We're gonna spend about two minutes at each of these posters. If it's already listed, leave it. Don't double it up. Don't say I agree with it. Just leave it. So the first one, I'm gonna give you a little bit more time so you can think about it and get used to the activity. And then after that, you're gonna kind of, we'll move through a little bit fast. But really, to have some dialogue within your groups. And then also, so I would suggest there's two kind of post-it note writers and just kind of start to fire through some of these opportunities for each. Do I think we have five groups now? Right? Okay. The group that get, every time you get to the move, you luck out because you get cookies. So that comes, that comes with the move group. So this group, we'll start you with the cookie group. You guys can start the move. If you guys can start at Riverside Campus, that's over there. If you guys can start at cooperation. Threat is T. So what's a threat to us to meet something? What's a perceived threat to like the, so if we talk about community involvement? What's a threat to your group? What's a threat that's impossible? Threat could also be barrier, but SWAT, we worked that well, so that's a good. So everybody know where they're going?
We're going up here.
Yes, you guys can go to community hall. So go ahead and get up and go. You're gonna do it at the station. You gotta get up and move. You can save it for the other poster. You're gonna each get a chance. Why don't you guys start with equity, or no, you guys go to the side. Actually, right, right, right here. Community involvement. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Don't double up! Take your post-its with you. We're up and moving today. I screwed up. You can go to...
Now he's making no sense.
Yeah, take equity. Alright, about thirty seconds left. Finish your last thought and then rotate clockwise. Alright, rotate. You guys are not very good listeners. Check the group out next to you. Start moving. You don't have to have all the answers. The move goes to Riverside Campus. Don't forget your cookies. All the way down to Quarter Riverside Campus. Take your cookie. Don't talk with your mouth full. Remember, don't double up. If you agree, just put on something else. You'll get a chance to... Okay, another thirty seconds. We're gonna rotate. Grab your cookie. Alright, rotate. Move, carry your cookies, you're all the way down the corner. A little bit less time because make sure you read, and then you should just kind of add on as you need. A little less time because make sure you read, and then you should just kinda add on as you need.
You got seven of you related.
Another thirty seconds, we're rotating. Okay, go ahead, rotate. Move your very cookies. Come on, come on, the moot. You got group at Riverside Campus.
We don't share, I feel like we don't do a good job sharing successes in the district. It's always negative stuff, so I figure like, if someone's there, sharing district success. That's an opportunity. Yeah. I feel like sometimes we do, I think it's an opportunity to do more of that. Yeah, which is often.
Assuming that's what we're doing.
The other thing I would say is like, one thing we, obviously, we don't have to, right? That doesn't happen, it's supposed to both. For anything that we need to, we're likely to do it, so maybe specifically, you can, but we all know, there's a lot of things that we're trying to do. It'd be surprising how people in the community don't know. They don't even realize, you know, so like, maybe communicating to, educating, maybe, I think that's why. Educating, yeah. It's strategic, yeah, it's strategic, maybe educating, but then also sharing. Nobody follows.
About thirty seconds. Alright, go ahead, rotate. You have two more.
I actually thought about pulling different ones out. I saw them fish too, because we were fishing.
Because if you don't do anything much, nothing more than you know, those are the things that you're taking. Exactly.
Thirty seconds. Alright, let's go, last station, go ahead, rotate to your last station.
Oh, absolutely, I'll tell my dad immediately after this. Be like, oh, those girls.
I did.
District, so if you can find a place to get it.
She's a.
Even if it's just like, hey, how to, you know, maybe it's five or ten.
Here's Laura Mary David, right?
And you are. Are you the youngest?
There you go.
Um, yeah.
Okay, is that?
That's like one percent.
Okay, because that's like, that's just me.
You'll never hurt me, it's like if somebody was to say, that's, oh, test, yeah.
Of course, you're pretty personal when you make good decisions. Sometimes you have to, you have to, after you make good decisions.
It's been an hour, forty-five minutes.
Alright, it seems like everybody's kinda got their last thought. It's, it's funny, you guys were all quiet in the beginning. Okay. The last part of this is I gave you each three dots. And what I'm gonna ask you is independently, under each of these, you have three votes. Which to you are the most three important things? There's a lot that are important. Which post-it note is the most three important things to you? It could be on all of them. So you can go through all of them to take a look and see, but you have five minutes, and that keeps me on time. You have five minutes to go around and pick your three and vote them up. And don't point your count on someone else's, because their count matters.
Oh, like that's like right over top.
It's a specific sticky note. No, it's a specific sticky note on the dot, you're voting on a sticky note. Take your time to read them.
I'm like, really, how are you? Because my, my son is probably the reason you go.
There's no tearing dots in half. No yellow markers coloring them in to make a dot. Once you vote them, you can have a seat, we'll wrap up.
If you want, I would think to stay.
Everything to stay on? Yeah.
That's right, okay. We're talking still.
No. Everything to stay on?
Yeah.
That's right, okay. We're talking still.
It's totally fine, I'm just kidding.
Load it up.
Kind of stay.
I'll do the answer, they stay.
Yes.
Casey does not, she's got lucky now.
I didn't check it. I don't know if I should check a score or not.
I will, check it.
Alright. So thank you, thank you for indulging. I think in this hour, there was more quality dialogue that's happened in any of the listening sessions we did or any of the walking around listings. It's clear, by just in a brief look at dotting, that safety and security of our legacy elementary schools is incredibly important to this group. And that's something that, in any plan that we do, we need to address that. Long term, it almost seems like something we can do in the future. The last thing I ask. The last thing I asked you today... Is there's a QR code? I will be completely transparent, we will, I'm going to take these from here. We are going to read them for themes. We'll do a list of themes and reports and kind of what themes came out and preferences. And we'll combine this with the Melridge group, so please don't feel like you have to come to both. There is, it is going to be the exact same session. We'll do the same thing at Melridge. Then put them kind of all together. And the QR code, I asked for your name and your email, I will email you all the results. I also asked for some other comments that are there. If you want to put one in, please put that in knowing that it will be shared with everybody. So those comments will be emailed out, so if you give me your email, you will get it back. If you don't give me your email, you can't fill out the form. It's one of those things that are there. I really do appreciate you spending your evening tonight, especially with game one against the Yankees, I get it, um, going on. But this is incredibly valuable information for the next steps as we move forward. So I will share these out. We will then look at the next step, because what we value as a community is very important to any plan that we have. Any plan that we have, and any plan that we do, and anything we move forward... Is going under that vision, which we started with, one community, pursuing greatness, and getting better every day. And we can't get better if we don't really know where we need to work, based on our community. We are all one community. So I thank you all for coming, that is all I have for tonight. Go guards! We do have to break.
Um, so just so everybody knows, if anybody wants to come to a meeting... Twenty-first? Wait, we haven't had it? Um, we have a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting October 21st at 7:30 a.m. A Curriculum and Program Committee meeting October 16th at 7:30 a.m. Finance and Personnel Committee meeting October 16th at 8:30 a.m. Work session October 22nd, 2024 at Melridge, that Dr. Rotino just mentioned, at 6 p.m. And then our Board of Education meeting is October 24th, 2024 at 6 p.m. We welcome all, more than welcome to join us. Um, so I make a motion to adjourn at 7:53 p.m.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Paco, can you call roll?
Lord of Missing.
Hi.
Leonard Grassi.
Hi.
Please Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Deskeen.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.